All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It's time to call our regularly regularly scheduled board meeting to order. Glad to see everyone. First meeting of our new fiscal year. Uh, the first item on the agenda is the approval of our agenda. So I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we would approve the agenda as printed. Any discussion? Hey, seeing none, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. That will bring us to our first opportunity for public comment. Um, each person that is present for public comment, I see we have members of the public here today to hear from. Um, we'll have three minutes per person. So I would like to ask that you respect the time uh limit there. Um, and also make note that there are two public comment opportunities during the meeting. But really, these are afforded for folks to take advantage of one or the other. Um, so if you take advantage of the public comment at the top of the meeting, um, we wouldn't expect public comment again at the end of the meeting. Um, so if there are members of the public who would like to speak at this time, we'd open the floor for public comment.
My only comment is I'm here to listen. It's my first time, and I'm sorry I didn't have the uh agenda that you're talking about for comment. So uh it's my first time here. I'm part of the uh Department of Department of Hills Chamber. So uh there will be some comments in the future, but I'm here to listen and learn.
Awesome. Glad to have you. Uh, and yeah, we have your name.
My name is Richard Alston. I'm the Chess Plain Realtor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Allison. Any other public comment?
So I'm Dr. Sophia, and I want to thank you first for everything that you do for the community. Please remember that we are a part of your community. The blood of Palestinian children does matter. Over eleven percent of the population in Gaza has been executed. Can you imagine eleven percent of the people in the United States being executed? Over twenty thousand children have been murdered. Can you imagine twenty thousand children in the United States being murdered? Imagine ordering everyone to an area X. Two million people and then bombing that area. Imagine lying that there's food in area X. Or there are vaccines here in area X. And then when everyone lines up, you bomb them. Imagine sleeping in your tent. Boom. Then hearing your ten-year-old scream that he can't feel his arms. And then you have to explain to him that his arms have been blown off. The library is the first witness to history, the first stronghold of education to the public. Why does Israeli ethno supremacist money matter more than your Palestinian neighbors in Farmington Hills? Who are mourning the murder of our cousins, our aunts, our sons and daughters? Since November twenty twenty four, we have been coming here and meeting with you. We have brought petitions. We have met individually with directors, with the president. It has made no difference. The library held a concert for a terrorist regime. But refuses any lecture about Palestine. That's heartbreaking.
Thank you for your comment.
Um, my name is Stacy and I'm gonna go. Um, and I didn't have anything prepared because I honestly didn't really know what I could say. I mean, I was here a couple of weeks ago and talked about just, you know, a few tiny examples of what Palestinians are experiencing in Gaza, but also the West Bank. Every single day, every single second of every single day. Um, but um, and you just heard from Sophie, like imagine if this were you. But something I want to try uh along that same line is imagine that instead you're you're Sophie. Or there's a woman here a couple of weeks ago who herself is Palestinian and has led has lost um, I can't remember countless loved ones, and she probably can't even get in contact with a good portion of the loved ones she has in Gaza. But imagine all of that. And you've tried to engage with your community. You've tried to engage with the library who held uh an event that would have been the equivalent of, let's have a Nazi history Nazi celebration night, because that is what it what it is. Um, you know, Israelis were some of the first, like Zionists were some of the first collaborators with the Nazis. Um, that's not a, that's not an opinion. That's a fact. You can actually look it up. Um, but imagine all of that, and your tax dollars are not just going to the bombs that are killing your family members. They're not just going to the organizations that are helping to starve your family members who are besieged. But they're also going to your local library, who you're hoping will stand up and say, yes, we will hold the night for Palestine, not our not our for Palestine on their history. But instead, every time for months, you just kind of keep getting the runaround of like, well, we can't do it because of this. Or there's this other thing. And um, I'm not trying to say I know what everyone's individual opinions are, what their beliefs are. I'm not trying to say that. I'm just trying to say that someone who's not um, you know ethnically or religiously part of, you know, the Palestinian or Muslim or Arab community at large. Um, the fact that I come to these meetings and I've gone to city council meetings. And all they want is just bare minimum representation, bare minimum, like this, it's nothing. While their people are being massacred, while their lands are being destroyed for generations to come. And yet, like, all I hear is like, well, maybe we'll do this, or maybe we'll do this. And so maybe you can't imagine yourself, you know, under the bombs. But maybe you can at least imagine, like, if you've ever felt frustrated that someone's like, well, we can't just do that because of this process or because of this rule, like I sound, and I'm getting upset and frustrated, but it's because um, I talk to Palestinians every day, like the ones in Gaza. Um, and uh it's just, it's very frustrating to um still kind of get the same response um from the city council, from um and and from the library. And I just want people to consider like, what if you were living here and your community leaders is essentially, we're saying that speaking about your people's history, your country's history, a country that world powers are trying to literally erase from existence. Just imagine they're trying to erase your history, your people. And all you get told is no, we can't do something political at the library. I just want people to imagine how that might feel. And where can we have to go? But I will be back at the next one.
Thank you for your comment. Nice. With that, we will close public comment. That will bring us to the approval of the minute for our June twenty twenty five meeting. I believe these were distributed earlier in the week and you guys have had a chance to take a look. Um, I will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from the June meeting.
Wishing the approval of the next.
Got a second? Thanks. If it's been moved and properly seconded that we would approve the minutes from our June twenty twenty five meeting. Any discussion? Hey, seeing none, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries. That will bring us to the treasurer's report. Yeah, Kathy, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, um, I move the board approved June twenty twenty five operating bill totaling five hundred sixty nine thousand forty three dollars and ninety five cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, it's been moved and properly seconded that we move June operating bill now five hundred sixty nine thousand forty five ninety five cents. Any discussion?
Interesting.
I'm not challenging this. I'm just curious about, and maybe we did this all the time, we just didn't see it, uh thirty seven thousand dollars to Wayne State University. Didn't say for a second, but you know, okay.
That would be for Brunel Barrett Company. Uh, we paid twenty twenty dollars for a lost in our library loan book to Wayne State.
Oh, I was reading it wrong. It's only twenty dollars. Never mind. Thank you, but that's a.
I don't know what Kathy responded with. How about hearing of that?
I didn't like you said, yeah, sorry.
Um, any other discussion or observation?
What is that star? Star is the uh retiree medical.
All right. See, no further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Any vote carries?
What suggestions else? Yeah, I have a sheet that tells what all those line items are. Um, this is a glossary. And I'd ask Kelly, because maybe other people would like to have a glossary, because then you just look at it, you can see what those items are. Would that be possible, Kelly?
It's not going to tell you what the items are on the thing. It's going to tell you the count it comes out of. Like, that's just a a register of basically that one process. That gloss is not going to help with that.
I kind of like the idea because we could extend it and it kind of for the regular vendors add the purpose, right, of those expenditures, just so people know what those things are.
You don't have to buy my paper. I mean, I can give you the glossary.
It does, it does say, remember any state aid or state penal fines, it does. That I got vice of things a little bit to tell you about them.
Right, those are the accounts.
Right, but this is, this is the bank account.
So we want to be able to put it on a bank statement. Apparently what we're talking about is issues, yeah, issues when we have a spreadsheet. And you're wanting to know what's um that spreadsheet that shows all of our finances. You need to put it out.
Well, I thought use what says the papers and it tells the history of the memorial gifts that are picked, you know, such and such, uh employers, what that is. So um, you know, when you're really new to the spreadsheets here, it's it's, I I thought it was helpful.
Yeah, and that that is on the incoming side, but I do think like a vendor list on the expense side could be helpful too. And just to tie what those vendors provide to us. So you see been a star, right? And that says this is retiree health benefits, right? And that way, as with trustees, new trustees come on and they're looking at the report, they can kind of get familiar with what each vendor provides. So I think that makes sense.
Yeah, for the recurring vendors, right, for the recurring.
Yeah.
Sure.
So a good idea, Sharon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Awesome. I'm just thinking about. Okay, uh, I move to receive and file the June twenty twenty five financial reports.
There's a second.
Second.
Yeah, been moved and properly seconded that receive the file the financial report. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries.
In June, our earned income for Michigan class was forty four thousand five hundred ninety two dollars and eighty five cents. Our year-to-date earned income was two hundred sixty two thousand three hundred twenty one dollars and six cents. And our month ended was twelve thousand four hundred thirty five thousand four hundred sixty eight dollars and sixty cents. And June first, our daily yield was four point three seven seven six seven percent. And on May third, oh, and on June thirtieth, it was four point four zero eight four percent. So it went up a little bit. It's kind of going down.
Yeah, that's cool.
All right. Thank you very much, Kathy. Uh, with that, we will move to the Friends of the Library reports. But thanks, I will turn the floor over to you.
So much. Hi, everybody. Um, I'm sorry I wasn't here uh last month in the wedding reception to go to. It was uh Downriver and Wyandotte, and I had never been there before. It's not sunny. So I just wanted to report out on the gala. Thank you, uh, everybody who attended. It was it was fairly well attended. Um, a little less than last year. We did a survey to see what members thought about it. Sadly, they love it. And they continue to love it. And, you know, I I uh, I kind of like threw a dart at an entertainer and we had somebody who was so fun and personable that um she unfortunately made a big impact. She was the grand. So um, we're probably going to look at continuing it, even though I said it was going to be the last gala, but also um doing it so that we don't spend quite as much money. Food costs are really kind of driving it. And I'm I'm not quite sure that the food costs equate into something that is a great experience for everybody. So I'm sorry, Kelly. I'm sorry, Maria.
Kelly's not, Kelly's okay with that. She won't be here.
Well, she won't be here in my capacity. Might be here another. Um, so thanks, thank you for everybody for that. Uh, I actually, work has been so busy that I haven't had a chance to look at like any financials, so I don't have any report on that. We did have um, we did have somebody who resigned from the board, Don Gear resigned, and she was the volunteer coordinator for a lot of things. So we're we're going to look to replace a board member who can do that. And um, with changes to the employment laws for teens, including volunteering, we're looking at the friends because they're exempt from this as a five oh one three C three, three C.
Three C.
Six. Same.
Um, organization uh is being sort of the the spearhead for that. So I I can report out. I I'm, but I'm sure that you all will hear about this uh later. Um, because I get to meet with everybody and Sarah McCarthy, uh, who is sort of putting everything together is the teen services librarian, because it affects a lot of the things that she does. So we'll see how that goes. It's not a huge requirement. I, you know, in thinking about it and talking about it. Um, it just means that somebody would have to get a work permit from their school office, but it it does mean that you can't just like drop in, get volunteer hours and then, you know, drop out. So it has to be a little bit more organized, which is is not bad. I think it's it's a good direction to go in in terms of making sure that teens are in a good and a safe place for. So um, that's, oh, one last thing. Uh, anybody who works in the library is going to flip out when I say this, but we actually need more donations. So if you, not necessarily from you guys, but if you are out and about and someone says, hey, I need to donate my blah, blah, blah. Um, my books, my, you know, whatever, we will absolutely take them. Uh, we just got a wee console, which is not, you know, being made anymore. And I I I I made my own team go through and make sure that it worked because I needed to put him to work. And um, it it's really great. And these things go for like at least seventy dollars on eBay. And it came with, you know, two controllers. And so this kind of thing is something that I'm really interested in because should we get like a finite space that will be easier to control than it, it would be, it would be really great to be able to have this stuff available and out. That's it. Any questions about anything?
About book sales?
Oh, um, you know, I was thinking about this and it's it's pretty thin on the ground in terms of donations. So we would have to get a lot to have an October book sale that would make an impact. But I have a lot of like classic stuff, like somebody dropped off classic sci-fi books like from the sixties and seventies. And if that's your jam, then they're going to be really, you know, interesting for you. Um, but uh, I I think we, the the Summer Reading Club with the free book is a sign up for adults and teens, right? Adults and teens or just adults?
Just adults.
Um, has been really popular. And so I don't know what the the totals have been, um, because I haven't talked with Ashley about it. But it has been like as as participation and people come into the library more, then the book sale sales tend to grow just because it's like a stumble upon kind of thing. So that's why we would need more donations so that I I I can be sure. I I want to say tentatively, we have it probably the third weekend in October, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure what that's going to look like. We would need to.
Um, regarding the five one one C three, that's what you get donations, it was IRAs and so forth. Um, if it's possible, move that forward and get it completed this year and have enough time to do a little marketing about it. Because people who have to do the required minimum distributions, you could catch the ones for two thousand twenty five.
Um, Sharon, your discussion about that always in the back of my mind.
And it's because once you miss two twenty five, you know, wait for the donations on two twenty six.
Yeah, it it really is a question of getting enough board members in who can actually do the work. Can't do everything. I have to sleep. And I have a family, you know, these things, these small things. So um, it's it's there. I'm going to be at the Summer Reading Club final party. Sherri Vaughn invited me to come. She's going to have a tent for me.
May I, may I suggest that um you ask, uh, there are a lot of law firms or whatever, um, to ask what would what we'd have to do to pay someone to set it up for us, um, so that it wasn't all in your wheelhouse. Um, and you know, you could bring the cost of it to the board and we could approve spending four thousand dollars to have somebody officially line it up and get it flying. Um, move it forward without, you know, having it on your plate to get done in between your real life. So it's just a suggestion.
It's just.
Stacy, I'm sorry. I don't know what we're talking about.
Right, if if you have a large IRA and you're over seventy two, you're required to make a distribution every year. It's a taxable event. Suppose you're lucky enough that you have to distribute uh out of your IRA fifty thousand dollars. It's all taxable. Unless you take twenty of the fifty to go to a five oh one C three, then it's like a deduction. You don't have to pay tax. And people, instead of giving the library five thousand dollars out of their taxable money, you just give them five out of your IRA. And we have many, many patrons here who have to make the distributions every year. And it goes up by your age. You have to make a larger distribution every year. So um, people are very generous about that because otherwise we're going to pay fully tax. So I get that, but what's the barrier to that? You have to have a IRS five oh one C three set up.
It's a, and they have that. So let me say this. Um.
Yes, I'm panting with with anxiety about having to do all this stuff. So go ahead.
Kathy will probably speak on this a little bit in her finance committee report. But the finance committee has had two meetings now, another one today, right? And we're kind of uh exploring support of FCL at a broad scale, right? Which would include the Friends, of course, which already is a five oh one C three, okay? And it also will involve us considering whether or not we want a foundation um, organization for large and planned giving. Um, so we'll probably be coming back to you guys with a recommendation. Um, we're looking to coordinate with you, Sharon, from the perspective of the facility plans to see what those naming opportunities and get all of that fleshed out. Um, so I think we will be addressing it in that way. Um, and Stacy, we talked about you today because the last thing I said in the meeting was like, we need to sit down with Stacy about this to make sure that the Friends uh needs and goals are kind of aligned in this overall support FCL plan. So we'll be coming to you, um, Stacy, to hopefully help you out with this piece. Um, you know, and and kind of set us, set ourselves up with um, a structure and an infrastructure to receive gifts at all levels, whether that be just volunteer support all the way through major giving. So so it's on the on the finance committee's agenda, for sure.
So just to be clear, those Friends have a five oh one C three.
Yes.
And there's been some conversation about setting up a recipient organization for charitable gifts to the library, separate from Friends.
Yeah, and that kind of came out of the strategic plan activity. Um, that was identified as one of the needs or potential needs. And so now we're kind of resurfacing that as we're approaching these uh major building projects to reassess that.
Sure.
And then bring a recommendation back to you guys about what direction we move. Um, but our goal will be to facilitate and connect with members in the community who, to Sharon's point, have those funds and want to contribute, and they just might not see that clear pathway as to how they they do it with us.
Yeah, so so, yeah, so this would need some conversation and we shouldn't do it here, but such a foundation, this board would not control that. It would have its own board.
Right, and there are different models, and that's part of what we're exploring. So if you look over at Baldwin Public Library, they have an endowment or trust. In fact, though, they do have the same, it's it's set up so that the serving library trustees are also the foundation trustees. So there are a variety of ways that you can structure it. We're kind of doing the homework now, and we'll be coming back to you with a proposal. Yeah.
If I could add the email that Kathy Brown sent out from United for Libraries uh at the the next webinar that they have, which is live, um, and a lot of their Fallujah, what used to be Fallujah and is now United for Libraries, talks a lot about Friends and foundations and and the various levels. And there are a lot of places that have both Friends organizations to do some of the the smaller scale things and do community support and things like that. And there are foundations to do what Sharon and Ernie are are talking about. And they they tend to work hand in glove with the idea to support the the library, but they can often, you know, be their own separate boards.
I set this whole thing up for Bell Isle. Uh huh. So I set up their Friends and I set up their foundation.
Hey, so same thing.
Yeah, so, yeah, it would not be any different here.
And it just needs somebody who can do that kind of thing and has the time and the energy to do it, to get it done.
Well, you do, I mean, you do need, it is helpful to have a turn, an attorney. You don't need an attorney for like a Friends organization, but for a foundation, you would.
Yeah, and that's part of what we'll be bringing back to you guys. We're kind of doing some gimbal walks with libraries who are currently doing it. Um, and then also running by our legal counsel um for guidance. So the finance committee will report back to you on that for sure, but it's on, I'm glad we're talking about it because it's something that's actively in play right now. Anything else for Stacy? Are we still in your report?
What?
Yes, we're still in your report. Okay.
Still in the Friends report.
Good.
Yes, yes.
All right. So just to be clear.
Yes.
No summer book sale, maybe one in October.
Um, it's really going to depend on the amount of donations that we get.
Right.
I mean, children, the the children and teen stuff are down to absolutely nothing.
Okay.
We were cleaned out after the spring sale. And while donations still keep coming, forty to fifty percent of that is not saleable. It doesn't have very much value. So I I go through a lot of it. But um, to a certain extent, the Friends are a dumping ground for people who cannot throw away things.
I get that.
And once you, you know, go through a number of books, you have no compunction with um appearing away things that maybe never should have been written in the first place. And by throw away, I mean recycle. So um, I will send out another newsletter to the Friends, but uh any any kind of donations that we can get are are really going to be um helpful that we can have at October sale. So it's this way.
Okay, Stacy. All right, I'm going to turn it to Kelly now for the directive report.
Okay, um, so we need to start annual circulation goal, seven thousand, you know, so it's like I remember I told you I had to check out like a thousand books.
I know I was out encouraging people, you know, okay, you're coming in and check out.
Next year, I did do my share.
Seven thousand, wow.
Seven thousand. Um, so I, Jam, uh, Jamfro, who is our next door neighbor, who's also our cleaning company uh, have their ten-year anniversary, and so they had a big party next door. Peter and uh Terry, it was, were you interviewed, Peter?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, Peter was interviewed. Sherry was spoke about something. I don't remember. And so they're supposed to uh send us a uh, a video of it. I don't know what they're going to do with this. It's just on her website. I don't know. But anyway, while she was there mingling with them, she found out that this is their giving season. So she uh solicited uh five hundred dollars for summer reading next year. Um, so that was good. Um, she also had a program just recently. It was a very popular program. It was with um. She also had a program just recently, it was a very popular program, it was with um Oakland Pride. And the problem was how quitters never win and winners never quit. Who are you? Let's win together and it drew over a hundred and ten attendees. Uh yeah, it was a, I could hear, um they were, had some motivational speakers, so when I left. I knew it was Tuesday night. Um and they distributed her small business resources for her and all kinds of stuff, so she's looking to do more partnerships with them. Oh, for summer reading, we're heading towards the end of it, July, July. Okay, uh we're at twenty five thousand reading hours so far, that was of uh Monday, July seventh. The uh Summer of Stories program finale is um Monday, July twenty eighth from six thirty to eight P M here in the Farmington Hills picking lot. So it's a great opportunity to go with the community if you would like. Um we have our next food truck um this Tuesday coming up on July fifteenth. This is the Drunken Rooster. Um it's a taco truck with a Mediterranean twist. And that's from five to seven P M. We are in the parade on um.
Saturday.
Saturday, I think I put, it's the nineteenth, not that it's twenty nine. Um it's Saturday, July, July nineteenth, the theme is movies. Uh so the book bike will be decorated decorated as the popcorn machine. Uh you just have to have to be in place by nine A M, you just have to walk down Grand River and see the book bike. As a start, power is the start, so we're behind. If you're coming from the library, we're on the other side of power. Running starts at ten. Nine forty is the step off. Expect to be done top. Uh well, I don't, I don't, you don't have to dress up, do you? Are you, you just have to wear a FCL T shirt. Oh, there you go. You wanna dress up in popcorn?
I don't have enough.
Oh, you don't?
I have a just saying library T shirts.
Sure.
Yeah, get on that swipe page.
He can give you one free.
He needs a library T shirt now.
All right. I'll work on that. Um okay, so I met with the uh Changing Spaces or Campaign Organization uh to talk about accessible restrooms. Um just some ideas that I sent to all the steeds, you thought they were pretty standard. But uh there were some interesting ideas that I hadn't thought about. Um like, you know, put a toilet in the corner, you put the toilet in the center of the room so you can get on either side, you know, so. Which ours are not that way at this point, right? So um it was an interesting conversation with them, so um.
How did they hear that that we would be?
I don't know, he told me they were in the city of Farmington Hills, that they were meeting with the city of Farmington Hills to um. There's a initiative to make bathrooms more accessible or something, and so somehow he heard that we were doing it. I don't know. Um we have a celebrity here, if you did not watch the video clip. Yeah, he, it was funny because he emailed us. And we're all like. This could be on TV. I was like, Becky, back, are we doing that? You're invited to the table and you take a seat. And then he called in, I'm like, yeah, we're we're working on it, we're working on it, we're trying to find someone who's willing. He's like, oh no, it's just on Zoom. It's re, it was recorded, so it wasn't vibrant. He said, we can stop and it started over and you can start from the beginning if you mess up.
I just want you to know we're professionals, so it's no starting or stopping. Um and the audit starts on August twenty fifth, so this will be Brian's first audit. So but usually, you know, it's pretty straightforward because Plant Rowan prepares everything ahead of time and just makes sure through. Make sure that throughout the year we're just have everything ready to go, so I don't imagine it will be an issue.
Uh we could, we won't try and be frank. Could he come to one of our meetings soon?
Yeah.
Um.
Let's see, what else do I have?
Do you have any questions for me? Oh, um the Farmington survey, you know, the survey they're doing for the properties, sorry, it is uh. Complete, however, they're in the process of cleaning it up and get it. And um so it should be available shortly because Steve is itchy, he he wants it so that he can finish the drawings.
Yeah. Uh that is a question that I had and you were sharing about when you thought Steve might be getting to us with some drawings.
So it's supposed to be by the end of July, but probably first week of August. Yeah, that's on that little sheet that it is. I think Peter can go on your facilities probably, only yes, you know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely. All right, that will bring us to.
Wait, one more thing, sorry.
Uh.
Oh, no, I'm on vacation. Um hmm, don't know when I'm on vacation. I'm on vacation end of July, July twenty sixth through the. It'd be fun, Lake Michigan. Oh wait, one more. Lovely note, one of our patrons, she is an avid reader. And uh uses our, she's probably the number one person that uses our Malcat system. But anyway, it was a happy retirement. Well, with some little things in there, so yeah.
We have another piece correspondence uh that Crystal received. Oh, did you get it to me? Oh, this might be it.
Uh this was a. This was a uh community member who uh wrote to Crystal Saxon that wanted to thank. Uh wanted to extend a heartfelt thank you for the organization organizing this evening's. For uh DOPCA performance, my wife, children, and I were excited to attend and it meant a great deal to see our Palestinian parents celebrated so beautifully in our local community. We truly appreciate the effort your team puts into creating inclusive and enriching events like this. It was a joyful evening for our whole family.
All right, any other questions for Kelly?
I'm done.
Let's not do that. Uh next up, that'll bring us to our subcommittee updates. Thank you, Kelly. Uh first up is personnel, thank you, Harrah, I'll turn it over to you.
Our big update as always is the director hiring process that is ongoing. Renee, Kathy, sometimes Ernie and I see each other quite often to talk about uh all the hiring stuff. We just sent an our July update to the staff. Uh I committed myself to sending monthly updates to staff about what's happening. Um and so the job posting was, is now up on the website. We have a very intentional recruitment um plan where we have both national and statewide organizations. And services that we are posting uh the job at, and so that's available. So I'd share that with your networks. Um we are currently in the process of determining, I think, our interview questions. Sporing rubric uh for both the first round, second. Yeah, patient. The goal is to have about ten first round interviews, narrow it down to the top three candidates. So you will have to be at the final round of interviews. Uh I emailed this, but please, 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 September eighteenth and October second. Five thirty to eight thirty. In the auditorium here is where we'll be having the final round interview so that there will be a public meeting. So the board will be um asking interview questions, there will be a presentation that the candidate will be asked to do for us. And so the any member of the public, including FCL staff, might be in attendance there. And as part of our. Intentional efforts to get input from staff, we have invited them to give us some ideas for interview questions. We cert, we've already gone through and kind of uh drafted our ideas, but we want to see where the energy is around stats. What they really find critical. Um and yeah, so our next step is to finalize that. The job posting closes in August, and so we hope to have everything kind of ready by then. Personnel committee members, anything else? To share?
Oh, only that, I looked on the website today and um. If yes, Sarah changed what she's placed on the website, she placed part of the job posting. And then part of the director position description. And it's very hard to read and it doesn't include all of the things that I need. So I've asked her to take out the job description position and just put in the posting, which, you know, gives people information. At the end of that, there's a link where they can download the job posting and the director uh description. And so, but she's on vacation, so I'm not sure if they'll get. But I wish I had seen that earlier.
Um and then one other item that we talked about was the retiree healthcare fund. Um I never know the best way to explain it, I haven't, I have, but I can't say the words. Essentially, we have an excess of funds from the retiree healthcare. Trust, uh that is, so we put aside money for the retiree healthcare um expenses. And it's a hundred and sixty seven percent overfunded. Um it's even more dire. And so we've done some research and Kelly certainly has figured out like, what do we do with that overage? And so essentially, we're able to reimburse ourselves. Uh so it's essentially like in one pot of money, there's this overage and so we're able to transfer it to another. Uh and so I think we introduced this last month, but we want to make a motion, so I think.
Are we still funding that?
It has to continue to be funded as long as we have retirees that are.
And are are, is the number straightened out, so it's no longer gonna keep on being overfunded?
It will continue to be overfunded until we have retirees who are using their healthcare.
Or until we don't have any active.
There, there's a certain population of retirees, so not every, so eventually it'll end, but it may take like twenty years.
But we overfunded it by, are we still adding more to the overfunding?
No, no, we don't add anything to that.
You stopped whatever was overfunded.
Yeah, so I'm trying to remember, we have a couple of million dollars in there and annually. So this reimbursement would take out about sixty five thousand of it, so it'll take some time for us to draw out all the funds. Out of that.
You want the motion now, Ernie, or wait till new business?
I could take it now. Well, trying to say, since we already approved the agenda, can we leave it on a new business? It's like, don't mess my life. But we hit a new business, I think.
I should have waited for that.
You don't say much, what you tell us, you have to listen.
So as far as personnel committee updates, that's all we have in there.
I'm just, uh one small uh consideration, or are we wondering, is it possible to have one of those director interviews at the Farmington location, logistically?
I don't think any room space is open, you know, every.
One room, the one room, I know, I know.
Are pretty hot, come on.
Yeah, I think it's a good consideration, it's something we will relook at and see what we can do. Maybe Kelly can, like, somebody around.
Depends on what's going.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else for?
For space at this auditorium?
All right, uh thank you very much, Dohara. Personnel committee is working very hard and I do appreciate the invites to come. And I come when I can, um but I do really just love uh watching you all work together. You all work together so fabulously, so I always leave that meeting feeling uh very encouraged. So thank you. Next up, that'll bring us to facilities, so Sharon, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, facilities, we uh skipped our last meeting, um we're at St. Peter, but he's on the agenda for a few items, a few minutes. Um I do, our next meeting is on the seventh and Kelly very nicely helped us with our our project list. And you all remember, you have large, with two Farmington and Farmington Hill with all the numbers on it.
Yes.
Well, um what you helped us do is we have phase one, phase two, phase three, and then potentially what's left for phase four. What hasn't been phased, and my concern was, is that sometimes we move them around a little bit because it didn't make sense. So what will happen is, because it's not exactly on the list, we'll forget something, like we'll forget there's a closet in the basement. So um probably what's great enough to make a list of everything that's not on the first three pages. So at the facilities meeting, we can go through this list and say which of these um, you know, are, can be done at the same time. The other thing, it's very useful to find that the cost of the next two phases. Like number three are are much, much more than three million. So when you actually see the numbers for the phases, like um for the left to phase is nine million on for the Farmington Hills. And about four million for Farmington, of the items that have not been, I think it's one, two, or three. So like a part of, um part of the project is having a good overall handle, not only on the items on the facility list. But on the long term budget. And I mentioned to Kelly is um the city about two weeks ago, Farmington Hills, did a presentation on what to do with the caustic center. Their presentation was a result survey and very lengthy, and they have a huge plan. Whether picking building one, two, or three, of about twenty three million dollars they have a, and they're gonna get a bond issued and raise a extra millage. So we have to kind of keep in mind what's happening in the other areas. Because they might be asking the same time we're asking for things. And my other thought of why this is so important is, I know Kelly is just really a great director, we'll get a new one. But trustees change and directors change, our finance person change. We want to have the support that shows what you did in the past clear, so that somebody could pick it up and say, oh, now I understood what they did. But you don't have to say, what the heck are these people thinking? So um that's why sometimes I'm a little fuzzy about that, because I I like to keep it straight in my own head, so. Um the other thing I'd like to add, and Benny trustees have comments about it, we haven't talked very much about it. But uh the extra landscaping when you first walk in, we've talked a little bit about the rocks in the parking lot. And I did know a few weeds growing up, but um what about, you know, cleaning up the fountain area? Or what about the the cigarette can, which is back from World War Two, I think? Um you know, you walk in and the pipes above are real rusty. There's just a few things when you come into the entrance that should look neat. Um so any ideas or suggestions or, I don't know how much, uh look in what we've spent, what do we spend on landscaping? Um but that entrance, really, we're not gonna make a big improvement for a while. It should look clean and neat.
Well, I have, I I noticed in patron comments, and I wasn't sure whether she was talking about um. Farmington or the Farmington Hills location. She wanted to volunteer to weed the entrance. Was that for here?
I believe so, yes.
And why aren't we using her?
Well, we can, but uh you know, actually, what I'd like to do is have put a call out for volunteers, because I've been thinking about this.
Me too.
My people love to learn.
Yes.
And um it's not that we can't get the landscapers in here.
Well, yeah, because that's my point of the conversation there.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that not be included in the routine service, track to landscaping?
Well, they do a terrible job. I'm telling you, they don't, they don't do a good job. The landscapers are getting rid of the weeds. They just usually weed whack them.
Yeah, a lot of times.
So what is our mechanism? I mean, that.
I think volunteers here is a great idea.
Yeah.
Let's take.
You mean, what's the remedy for poor?
We're, I mean, we can't pay professional landscapers to get the weeds. I mean, that's gonna be really expensive.
And it's not just around the fountain, it's, it's all.
Yeah, you know, places in the front.
I mean.
A beautification committee? Well, uh well, I think a beautification strategy, right? I think to Sharon's point, we.
We need a strategy.
Yeah, this has come up a few times. I certainly have been one who is emailing Kelly about things. That's, I'm sure in her mind, she's like, Ernie, you have nothing to worry about except when the windows are being cleaned. But the reality is, is that like, I mean, all like all of you, I talk to the public, I mean, and they bring these things up. I'm sure you've been told that our windows are dirty or we don't have any flowers. Why does the property look so stark? We've had that comment. We've had that commentary now, I've been on the board forty years now, and we've had that commentary consistently for these forty years at least. So in my mind, I think that we should have like a baseline strategy where we are. Looking for professional landscape artists or architect that can help us beautify some plantings and that type of thing. And then maybe there's some support with the volunteer efforts around the weeding, because to Chris's point, right, how much are we going to spend?
And that's just waiting, but like just maintaining, I mean, I do think it's the best they used to get. Professional design, or at least a very well-conceived design, even if we're not paying it, because we know we're going to be digging some stuff up later. Um, and then a, a call for volunteers, the. Farmington Garden Club is a very small club and it's very elderly. But they, they are interested in, in helping with gardens.
Well, you know, some of those weeds can be sprayed, like the ones that are on the sidewalks and the, the road or the curb and, and stuff like that, and even. Some places where they're on the, the rocks and things, it's just when it's around plants that you can.
Maybe first we need to make a list of what the items are we'd like to be done.
Yeah, that's an idea.
Out for the, our proposals, we call them RFPs or whatever, and see how much it would cost. That they have a, a real company to do the baseline for us and then, or. We don't really have an idea, I guess, of all the things we want them to do.
So Sharon, are you okay with maybe taking that as part of the facilities committees work?
I'm happy to see it look clean and neat, and I know Guy or Kathy are my team on this.
Okay, um.
But we need, we need some input from some suggestions about whom we, we might ask to do like an initial review or a cost, maybe. You know, uh, a baseline, so we start with, you know, baseline of mulch or something, maybe nothing else, but just plain mulch, Eric.
I have a thought on that, uh, there's somebody here in town, uh, who is a landscape architect who I know has done a lot of work for cares. Uh, who's currently doing some work at my house, so I might just reach out to him and see.
Just a, a baseline.
A link to maybe do that as a courtesy to the library, give us an idea, but I'll reach out. Yeah.
And maybe use frame, frame or preen, I never remember.
In the springtime, so that we don't have this humongous, uh, to.
That's, and you've got to do it for you, but still.
And it will cost a little money because we have a large area, but still, I think would be helpful.
Anyway, so everyone's ideas are impolitically to be great, you know.
I'll be glad.
And we, we'll, we'll be talking at a, a meeting on the seventh, so.
And our goal will be to next year win a beautification award. We need beautification committee, that'll be our measurement of success.
Well, we will look at that.
Yeah, let's, that criteria, right? Right.
I know, I know Peter will really be excited about landscaping.
Alright, um, anything else for Sharon and facilities? Okay, thank you so much, uh, now that will bring us to the finance committee.
Well, Ernie said most of what I was going to say.
Do you want to, Peter, to talk about elevators and stuff or not?
Oh, okay, got it, alright, got it, alright.
I'm not gonna.
So we've been researching websites to see how they set up for their endow, end donations. I know, Ernie had talked to Melissa Mark at Baldwin about their website, because I just love it, you should all go see it. So. We're going to have, we're going to see if we can have a Zoom.
We're going to see if we can have.
Well, a person meeting, okay, um, to talk about that with her. And then also do visitations to their library and Baldwin, I know, Redford Library, because they both. Did upgrades to their library and that might give us some help.
Yes, that's on ours.
Also, yeah, so he explained a lot of all the other stuff, and then the link on our website. To make online payments or online donations is broken. And, um, Ashley has been trying to contact the fellow from Boomerang, I think it is. To see if we, he can consider, so we can set up actually two, one for friends and one for. The library for people to do donations, um, and hopefully she'll be able to get ahold of him, she's been trying. And we'll get that fixed and going.
Alright, anything else for the finance committee? Alright, that will bring us to unfinished business, and the only item under unfinished business is the elevator bids, so Peter, I will turn the floor over to you.
Uh, so, I, um. I would ask hopefully if I talked with Kone and I also met with them this morning. Um, trying to answer all the questions that everyone has. So pretty much from, kind of going back from the last meeting, we. Know, we now know that the mono space, which is the cheapest. Proposal that we received, the one hundred and ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty. Has a lifespan of about twenty-five years, um, which could also. Just keep going on as long as there's routine maintenance and everything goes well. Um, this one will be a. Machine roomless option, so everything that's in our current machine room will be taken out. Um, they'll dispose of all that equipment, the, uh, hydraulic oil in it, they'll dispose of it. Um, and it would just be an empty room at this point, and everything will be built into the elevator shaft up at the top. Um, so there won't be any need for us to. Install a partition or wall for. Any of the new standards that are coming out requiring that it be separated into a non-walk-through room. Uh, we also won't have to have an oil separator, which will include essentially another pit. That we would have to have. Created and another, you know. Uh, the oil separator attached to the some pump, oil going to another kind of pit. We, this morning I talked to them about all the additional work. From other trades that is required, and the biggest ones are, we'll have to have, uh, masonry work. Electric work. And. Carpentry and waterproofing. There's minor work like plumbing and fire control, essentially. Uh, I say it's minor because it's just adding a smoke detector on the workroom landing. And then a smoke detector into the elevator shaft itself, tie it into our fire panel. Which I already talked with National Time a couple of weeks ago, uh. The way everything's set up, they have a whole station nearby that they can tie it into, so that's a very easy thing. And then they can set it up to essentially be ready for when the new elevator comes in. So it can tie into the elevator, but when the alarm goes off. It will automatically lower the elevator, open the door. Uh, minor work on plumbing is, we just need to verify that there is a shut-off valve, which we had this some pump in there. Replaced last year. We believe there is one, there should be one, it's just hard to see without actually getting into the pit itself, opening up the cover. Uh, but that's like a hundred dollar kind of thing. But back to the big ones, the masonry, electric and carpentry. Uh, pretty much, well, so we're getting a, it would be an entire new elevator. The masonry work would include cutting out all of the doors on each landing. Having Kone insert the new ones, and then the mason will rebuild the brick around it, sealing it in. Um, on the inside, they'll just have to install rails, a hoist beam and safety tube. The hoist beam rails and safety tube are provided by Kone, the masonry would just have to. Install it into the brick around it. And then they would have to open up the area at the top of the shaft for the control unit. And then fill any holes that are, is in the elevator shaft. With some kind of either fireproofing caulk or some masonry stuff. From glancing at it today, they didn't notice anything, we pretty much don't get. Work on it, it's, it's pretty much, if we have work in it, and like people are taking out rails, putting in new rails, adding equipment. We haven't had that, so our elevator shaft is actually pretty good, so there's going to be minor patching on that. Uh, electric is just wiring up the control unit, installing two GFCI outlets. Moving the non-GFI outlet over and then wiring in the three-phase disconnect. Um, they have to do it within twenty feet, so the disconnect will now be in the workroom right above, uh. Where the coat rack is now. Waterproofing because the building just constantly gets water just seeping in through the foundation. They'll have to just waterproof that like lower portion, it's probably like, I think, reef eat up. Um, and then the floor itself. And then carpentry is just redoing all the carpets and flooring that were torn out. Doing the mason was working and then also installing a flooring on the elevator cab. I don't know why they, they are telling me that all these quotes for elevators that come in don't have just standard flooring. So they give you something, but I don't know. A floor that has a, you know, six-inch gap that you would have to put in something, or if it's just flat where we can throw in our own carpet. That's something we'd kind of have to see, but we still need a carpentry person for the carpet on, uh, the workroom side and then the lower level. Uh, another question was about safety equipment. Something, there's something about OSHA rated safety equipment, we will not have to provide any specialty equipment. The idea is we're going to have to close off the parking lot entrance. Um, I know that's our ramp from the parking lot and that's our ADA in a way. So my idea is we're going to take the handicap ramp over here from the auditorium. Put it on the steps on the Liberty Street entrance, at least we have some type of ADA entrance, we can. We can close off the parking lot entrance, that way they only have to use their standard safety barriers that they have. Uh, the lower level is the same thing, no one's going to be, there's nothing over there for anyone to go to, aside from an emergency exit. So that will just be their standard barriers, the only thing we'll have to do is put up a. Plywood type wall with like a little door on the workroom level. Uh, because that's where, you know, they're going to be doing mason work and we're going to have an active staff there. So we'll need to put something up that just kind of keeps the noise down as much as possible. And the dust contain. None of it has to be, well, they told me there, it doesn't have to be anything specific, it could literally just be a plywood wall with something like, it has a door. Um, so they can source all these quotes from these different vendors. Basically, the total is, if, if we were to do it, it could, a rough estimate. In total would be about sixty to sixty-five thousand. Uh, if Kone sources the contractors, they'll have to mark it up to about eighty thousand.
This is for the others?
Yes, the other trades. So even with that, that still would come out to our lowest bid. Um. Because they're at one ninety-seven for their base, plus an additional eighty for trade work. Other vendors have quoted additional trade work as about a hundred thousand. Um, the city of elevators said three hundred and fourteen. TK said, is their base at two ninety-seven, so when you do the other trade, it's still, yeah. Um, and again, with any other vendor that we had proposals from, they're not suggesting. Or they're, they're not doing this one, they're kind of doing their, the hydro, the, the hydraulic elevators like how we have now. So that means we would have to get, uh, HVAC installed into the machine room. The wall separating it, uh, an additional pit for oil, which someone quoted another. Like six foot by six foot pit that we would have to have dug in place somewhere. And we already don't have the room for that. Um. We talked about start dates, they're. I know we, we talked about originally August for this year and then December to January. Um. Or their manpower, they would say August of next year would be the best bet. Uh, I'm sure we can talk about May if whatever works out in our schedule. Um, and then this could also work into our current contractors that are going to be doing construction and everything, because. That'll be around summertime, so we'll probably be doing the amphitheater and the children's program room, since the ground will be softer. So we'll have contractors on the outside corners of the building and then one contractor inside, so they won't really run into each other. And then. Additionally, with having the start date, you know, next year, there could be. Uh, possible tariff increases, so something we, they said we could do is either. They kind of estimate what the tariff will, is going to be, we pay it now, if it's not that much, we get a refund. Or we just pay the base price plus whatever the contractors for other trade is. And then once they come time for the tariffs, they'll, if it is something we need to pay more, they'll issue a change order kind of thing. And then we'll say, yes or no. So that's all the information I gathered. Yes.
Um, we have a phone in there, something.
Yeah.
Okay, because I noticed that was an extra charge.
No, I think that is their phone, um, so included in the base price, there is the standard, like. Uh, analog phone line going to it, I think what was in their quote also was. If we wanted to do their twenty-four-seven cellular thing that they offer. That, then we would pay that. But, uh, that was something else we talked about today, that I think they offer that for a year. And then after that, we'll have to either pay them again to continue using it. Or just have the phone line, but then you'd have to have someone come in and run the line, do all that stuff.
So Peter, the, the, the phone line, uh, that we would be utilizing. They said a traditional phone line, but is it a VoIP line or is it a copper line?
No, so it is, it's a copper line, because, um. This elevator hasn't been updated, we can do a VoIP line, we would have to essentially run from the existing, uh, copper phone line. To a like little box that kind of transmits a signal and then from there to the phone in the elevator.
Yeah, only reason I asked the question, because I think I understand AT&amp;T is discontinuing copper phone line service in Michigan by twenty twenty-eight. So, you know, I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing is going to be compatible with either a VoIP line. Or the wireless option might be the better option, because the copper phone line won't be available potentially here a couple of years. So that's something you can probably look into on the side, I don't think it'll hold us up today, but just something to look into.
Yeah, I was going to talk with, uh, Pat about it and, um. Pretty much, i- it's a very simple thing, because even, either if, if we do the copper line or the VoIP line, it's all the same thing where it's just a wire running to. Their call box and then that's a, it just, what's in between is different.
But that's standard call box, VoIP or copper.
Yeah, yeah, so that's the, that's included in their base proposal, uh, the cellular thing is cool, because. We wouldn't have to run all the wires or change it up, but the thing is, if we decided to. There's already no signal there, um, but if we decided to change from Kone doing that cellular stuff. The next contractor who we decide to go with would have to come in, remove the box and put in their own stuff, so that just seems, there is additional cost.
It is true, that's a bunker down there.
Yeah.
No cell service works there.
No, can I just put a funny sidebar on the table, so I go to the Redford Library about, about once a week. And the elevator on the children's area. And the elevator on the children's area, the first floor. Has an emergency call button that goes directly to the Red Bank Fire Department. And it gets pushed about four times a week. It really was a bad idea. It's it's the, I mean, the library, it's like, oh, no.
You know, we're gonna start therapy.
Yeah, we must have more restraint over here. Um, so Peter, I noticed um. I think one year um service contract is included in the price quoted. Um, did you guys have any discussion around ongoing maintenance contracts um and service necessary for maintenance of the elevator?
Uh, minor. Um, I did, I bring up, I brought that up. Um, so they will provide one year of, you know, their technicians coming in servicing it. Uh, after that, all that is is just the standard. Service that is required by the state, so e- every ninety days an inspection. Excuse me. Um, once a year, a um, no capacity load test. For this one, it's different than a hydraulic one. So instead of a three-year capacity test, it'll be a five-year capacity test. Uh, they they don't include that one, so we'll have to source whoever's our current elevator contractor for that. Um. But i- it's just standard.
Well, it's kind of sounded, maybe I misread it, but it it almost sounded like if you have a problem. They may, they might not come until the next time that your service appointment is. Did I read that wrong?
Well, I guess it could all depend, so. Um, if if it's a problem. They're probably offering a, just a maintenance inspection, the ninety day, the one year of that, right? So if we run into a problem, we would most likely just contact our current um elevator contractor.
Okay. Would that, I can't remember who that is.
Schindler.
Schindler.
Yeah.
Would they know how to service this type of elevator?
Oh, yeah. Yep. So this elevator, um, it's it's used a lot of places. All the big name companies know how to do it. So Schindler, Otis is another company, TK Elevator. It's. Different, but it's standard.
And we're happy with that? I didn't think so.
The, well, the the cool thing with this, um. Upgrading our elevator will most likely void our contracts, because since everything is now machine roomless. Whatever they're supposed to be inspecting and overriding service on, it's not there. Yeah. So.
And you got the one year to kind of bridges to, I guess, a new purpose for the ongoing maintenance next year.
Yep.
I just said one small warning. Is there any possibility now that the machine room won't be a machine room? Is there any possibility of repurposing that room for something else?
Like storage? It's connected to. Facilities room, which houses the HVAC and houses the sun pumps and houses. And. You probably, I don't know that you should put up a lot of stuff in there. I don't think you should, should you?
No, cause then we're gonna start collecting things that were official.
And I don't like to just put things away. Just, oh, we'll just shove it in there, shove it in there, you know, no.
Plus, the idea with this is. In two years, this is our phase for the expansion.
Yeah.
Um, the maintenance office will move, so the maintenance office will be in that new expansion part. So those doors will be just closed and no staff should really be going in there other than maintenance people to service things.
Okay.
Right. Good stuff, Peter. Uh, any more questions for Peter?
So we need a motion on the elevator. Deal, but how do you want us to do that with the extra? With the extra work that'll be necessary? Like what should the motion, what amount should the motion be for?
Yeah, that's one thing, Peter. I don't know if I got a clear read on whether or not you preference uh subcontracting all the extras. Or if you wanted to include that. In my mind, just set a gut check, it might be good to have it all inclusive.
Yeah, so um, we actually, I, yeah, I didn't mention this. Um, Kelly brought this up right before the meeting. Um. So something that the the Kone said was they can do it, but they'll mark up the price for whatever the other trades are. Or if we had like a construction manager who could. Again, source out the contractors, which would be much cheaper. So Kelly brought up, we're gonna have a c- construction manager for these projects coming soon. So we can just kind of see if we can talk with Steve, what we can roll those costs into that.
Yep.
Wondering if a good motion would be something like, um, it's so the cost is right now a hundred ninety-seven. Don't know about tariffs. Forget, we're just guessing about um what contractors would be. So might a good motion be um that we would authorize, for example, up to two hundred ninety-seven thousand? Just eh, just eh, just put a hundred on it and then it's up to, so. We spend less.
Yeah, I think I'm comfortable with that. Um, the base cost for the work plus the extra trades is two seventy-eight. Plus we know there's a potential tariff impact that I think we're trying to cover for.
Yeah, so I was just thinking just add a hundred, the base and.
Yeah, I I'm comfortable with that. Uh, done that in the past. Um, so if you'd like to make that motion, Chris, floor yours.
Hey, I I move that the uh, that the board authorized up to two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. For the work associated with the replacement of the elevator at the Farmington branch.
Hey, it's been moved and properly seconded that the board would au- authorize up to two hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. For uh renovation of the old replacement, I guess, of the elevator at the Farmington branch. Any further discussion?
I I just want to make it clear, the initial cost without the extras was eighty thousand?
No, that is.
The eighty is the extras.
Eighty is the extra trades, yeah.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Chris.
So what, you know yet, you know what countries we could be talking about here for tariffs? Like where are these arts coming from?
So it's mainly the um, like the steel beams and the hoists and it's, yeah, uh, China.
Okay.
Yep, right. And we'll keep our eye on that. Thank you very much, Peter. That will bring us to new business. Uh, Peter, don't leave, cause it looks like. Back to you. Um, but uh, first up is the retirement health funding vehicle, which Delara talked about just a little bit uh during the. Uh, personnel committee update. Kelly, any additional items that you'd like to provide around? What we're looking for here?
No, I think in your packet, though, I gave you this sheet. That explains, you know, highlighting. Like our current liability, we took it till everybody lived and, you know, our total liability is sixty-five, six hundred fifty-five thousand. And uh, yeah, position is two point six million, so like.
Yeah. I'm not sure.
No, I. Uh, and that, that meant it says the four hundred and eight thousand. The only thing I would add is like, do you want to revisit this every year? Each year?
And that was gonna be my thought, and you're reading my mind. It's like, I think we continue to revisit this yearly. Um, rules and regs change, laws change, right? Uh, just to make sure that we are uh handling as efficiently as possible. So yes.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that the library use the excess monies in the retiree healthcare trust. To pay the retiree healthcare premiums and to be reviewed each year. Good then.
I'll second it.
We are.
So let's ask about that motion then, something, I mean.
So we will pay for it monthly out of the budget and then in June, we will reimburse our, whatever we paid for the.
So maybe we have a restatement uh that we would reimburse ourselves.
Okay, to um, to reimburse ourselves for the retiree healthcare premiums.
Okay. Uh, I second it.
I did.
Okay, you accept the revision? Yes, okay, everybody accepts. I don't know who's doing. All right, it has been moved and properly seconded that we would reimburse uh the library uh from the retirement health uh trust account. And we will review it annually.
Okay, so so that I can have clarity, the uh, as I understand, at the library, pay the premium for the retirees. Out of the regular budget. And then in June. With the, that, that, that expenditure will be reimbursed by the overage in. Okay, I understand that. Vehicle.
This is all from Platmera, this is how they suggest, do, otherwise we have to reimburse them.
Does make sense.
Doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. All right, that brings us to LED lighting upgrades. So Peter, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Uh, so we recently had two RFPs posted in the month of June. One was for uh retrofitting the light fixtures at the Farmington branch. All the fixtures on the vault ceilings and in the workroom and a couple in the uh, the teen section, not children's. And then the second RFP was for doing retrofitting fixtures here. In the nonfiction section, um, essentially from the public cafe all the way over down those couple steps to the back wall. Uh, it closed out the end of June. We have. Five, five different co- or five companies, ten proposals, cause they were separated. Uh, our lowest came in at eight thousand five hundred and twenty-eight for the Farmington branch. And the lowest for here came out to twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. And so that includes. Removing all ballasts in the fixtures. Um, disposing of the ballasts, disposing of the old fluorescent bulbs, installing. Rewiring and installing LEDs to match the current. Color, temperature, feel, brightness of what we have in it.
And it happened to be the same company that's.
Uh, no, actually, two different. Yeah, two different companies. The one for Farmington was Allied. And the one for here was Emerald Electric. They are, I believe, was a local Farmington.
You know, I have two questions. One is, both, when I was reading that article, do they both use, give you the same kind of bulbs, you know, ordinary, good, very good? And the second, do they both offer some kind of warranty?
Um, so for Emerald Electric, they do offer us uh. Different types of bulbs that we could choose from. With warranties on it. The good option is seven years. The better option is also seven. The best option is eight years. Allied, Allied only offered one type. Don't think they have a warranty in it, but they did mention that they would be talking with um DTE to see what kind of rebates we can get back for.
This is not in fiction area. This is in the nonfiction area behind the reference desk.
Yeah, so it's from the the public cafe.
Yes.
Um, across to where the copyer is, the copy room. Yep, so all that going all the way to essentially here on the lower level.
Okay.
Not including though, the interior computer lab, the copy room itself. Uh, the bathrooms, the quiet study or the heritage room.
So it's going to the stairs.
And who, no, and down, down to the back wall.
Down the stairs to the back wall.
Yep.
And so it's going to be encompassing all of those shelving units back there.
Well, there is no lighting over the shelvings, but around them, yes. Non-recessed lighting, though. There is no recessed lighting in the the quotes for that.
So it's not gonna be useful for anybody looking for a book on the shelf.
Well, it it could help if there is already dark areas nearby. Um, the light could expand, yes.
So, but right now, there's a, what do they call it, lighting we have, called a soft light?
I would think so.
Is there others besides the real bright, bright?
Um, there are, but I don't think we should move away from what we have. Cause then, yeah, so soft white, I think is like in the middle. Um, on one end, it's. I always, I always mess this up when I'm trying to get light bulbs in for my own apartment, but I always get the wrong one, but it's like some kind of white that's kind of like. Well, yeah, so yellow like, like that one, but there's the white that's like sterile room, like.
Right, like what they do in prisons.
Yeah, yeah, so we don't want that.
Daylight is the blue light.
Yeah.
Blueish.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't know, yeah, ours is like a soft white, but it's like in the the middle where it's not like the yellow, but it's not blue. Um, but it's all just for overhead lighting, you know, the. Lights on the tables are the ones that provide, like the more comfy.
Sure.
There's, there's no advantage to approaching like the other company, like, hey, lower your bids, we can give you. One contract for both locations. Your recommendation is two contracts, two different companies from two different locations.
Hmm, yep.
Yeah, I think that was gonna be just my point of clarification, cause I I think that's all gathered here, but. Um. They'll perceive the advantage to uh having the same contract to be across the buildings.
Yeah, there, there's no, there's no advantage, but there's also no disadvantage to it. And um. These guys that came in, they are articulating lift that they're gonna use. We've confirmed that it will fit in in between all the book stacks and also, very importantly, in between our security gates. Um, at both locations. So there's no additional cost of having to remove those to get the lift in, putting it back up.
I was worried about that. I didn't, I didn't even know it was a thing.
Okay, uh, Peter, any risk of overages or anything of that sort um on these projects?
Not that is apparent.
All right, so the combined total on these two uh. It's it's twenty-one thousand three hundred and three dollars. At Madramath?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I think we could probably do this with one motion. Um, if we uh kind of follow suit with the last uh motion and authorize an amount. Um, the cost here is twenty-one, three oh three. We might wanna give a little extra room, so if you want to authorize maybe up to twenty-five K, I think that would make sense.
Are we gonna hit tariffs on these two, probably?
Uh, we gotta buy it now.
Buy it now, sir?
Oh, probably not.
Yeah.
Hopefully not, cause bulbs are usually local to the cities, pretty easy to source.
I move that we, the board authorized up to twenty-five thousand dollars for the improvements in lighting at Farmington and Farmington Hills branches. According to the recommendations made by Peter.
Okay.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded that we would authorize expenditures as outlined and discussed today, up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, for LED uh light upgrades. Any discussion? I see none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you for that research, Peter, and for making me much smarter about elevator. We wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can go on a quick tangent for the elevators. Um, so obviously learning all these elevator stuff. Uh, hydraulic elevators have like, you know, the one shaft that like, like moves it up and down. Uh, so that's, that shaft has to be whatever the height you're doing. So if we're doing three floors. That's double, because that's like all the way underground too.
Yeah.
I saw a video this weekend where there's a ten-story hotel that has a hydraulic elevator. So ten stories of.
Ten?
Yeah, ten stories up, ten stories. So ten stories of, yeah, ten stories up, ten stories down. It's just crazy.
All right, thank you, Peter. Much appreciated. Um, that will bring us to correspondence. Do we have any additional correspondence? Thank you very much. That will bring us to trustee comments. Uh, any? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any additional public comment?
So, hi, I'm Dr. Sophie, uh, and I just wanted to mention to you again the speakers we've been asking for. So they include Palestinian Nobel Peace Prize nominated civil rights attorney Hawaide Arab, surgeon Dr. Jap Sonimane, leads medical missions in Gaza, sociologist and NECA survivor Ismaila Noor, PhD. And now I'd like to add to that list, children's book author Mike Adetaba. And am I allowed to pass this around? So there are a lot of Palestinian children's books authors, but Mike is actually a local. And he's very willing to come and give a reading about his book and uh talk about his life as a Palestinian and, and what he's been through in Palestine and locally what he's been through as a Palestinian here. Uh, and I just also wanna highlight that you saw that there was very good reception for the Arab dance troupe that was held here in the library. And that shows you that there would be a lot of positive reactions if you had an event for Palestine. And I want to emphasize that we were told at a meeting with the directors that the library would hold cultural events for Arabs in general, but would not hold an event specifically for Palestine. And that's very shameful because again, the library held an event specifically for the terrorist regime and apartheid state of Israel. So there really should be a moral obligation to hold an event for the Palestinians that you have here in Farmington Hills, who are a very large population. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophie. Any other public comment?
I'd like to make one. The reason why I'm here, I'd like to present not tonight, but in the future, maybe in the seventh, when your next meeting is, a proposal for chess club. Right now, we're meeting at the Blue Hack. Uh, and it's not like this, which is quiet. We're playing with Uger people that are, you know, rather loud and also uh book reviews. And it would be nice to present a proposal for a chess club either at the Farmington Library, which I've gone, we, we play six to eight thirty at the Farm Hand. So before I go there, I go in the Farmington Library, I go downstairs. There's nobody there. Every Tuesday, there's nobody there from six before I get there. There's no one there. So I'd like to make a proposal. Now, I've been the president of the Old Fair Chess Club for twenty-two years. A rated tournament player, taught elementary schools, IGIO and Winchester, Winchester Elementary in Northville. They say Hugo in West Bloomfield, Holy Name with Birmingham, Southfield Consolidated, I mean, I've told a lot. Play a lot of chess, plus I'm a rated tournament player. So I'd like to prevent, that's why I'm here, so as I can understand more on how to propose this either at the Farmington Library or I know you have a game night here, one night. Game night, there's no chess, spaceships, other stuff. I have no idea. But it, it's perfectly suited.
Talking about the Old County gamers.
Yeah, games, right. So they have a, a perfect room because I can't push, I can't, as I say, market the Blue Hack or it'll just be too many people and sometimes there'll be a conflict between the Uger players and the Oak Club. So I just want to come here and sort of in- introduce myself, introduce the game of chess, it's quiet and then readers, chess players are readers. So it would be a nice addition, I think, to the libraries. Oh, the West, Westland Library has a section for chess players, very nice, Thursdays and Saturdays. They have specific tables with chess, their chessboards. So something to consider, that's why I'm here. And uh, I would just want to present that, at just planting the seed, because I, I want to write a proposal, obviously, so. Anything else? Anybody have any questions?
Have you looked into the Hawk with?
Yes, I have. And uh, I've been over to the Hawk and there's two people there. One, I don't think he's there anymore, but they presented some room and they were talking about percentages and chess players. They don't have, how shall I say, you can make more money throwing disco than you can with chess. I mean, they promote that more. More money there. So there, I've talked about it. I talked about maybe just meeting down in the cafeteria. They're saying, oh, well, that's, you know, for, for food vendors, well, okay, but there's a lot of tables that are vacant. So I can't seem to get over the fact that they're holding on to, to, it's almost like a child that hasn't played with a toy. And now somebody's playing with it, oh, I want it. No, okay, I get it, but I've been to the Hawk. And I, I can't seem to get forward with the Hawk. So go ahead, yes.
How many people in your chess club?
Oh, well, right now, it's not a chess club or meeting to play chess. Uh, I could push it to a chess club if I get the approval, like let's just say we have an uh, the Farmington Library in a base meeting. Now, sometimes I've gone down there and I see that there's a different configuration of tables. Be more than happy to put the tables back. Us chess players, that's not a problem, putting the tables back. So if, if I get a sanction that I can do this, now I can market it. I guarantee that I will fill up that meeting room or if it's up here at the Farmington Hills uh in the auditorium, I can really push it and the surrounding community, the demographics show that they're, yes, go ahead. Sorry, am I over my time?
You were getting to the time.
I'm sorry, sorry about that. Anyway, that, that was my comment, so.
Okay, we appreciate your comment. Um, I'm sure the library staff will, will be in touch with you about that. All right. Is there any trustee comment?
Uh, I would just like to go on record to publicly thank the library staff for that lovely segment on channel, channel seven. Uh, as you all know, I'm an educator, so literacy is near and dear to my heart. And uh, the summer slide is, is real, uh, and it particularly impacts children from economically disadvantaged. So they get an outsized benefit from the services that you will do here.
All right, I second that emotion. Anyone else?
Thank you to the patrons for the lovely snacks.
That emotion as well. All right. Seeing nothing else, I think that we can consider ourselves adjourned. You all very much.